Did you have the card in?
Sorry.
Is there anybody out there remotely?
No. Just our logins.
Tell me when you're ready.
I put the card in already.
That's the city council one. I've been using, just giving the girls the go to meeting that have been using that recording, so. I don't remember if they were on separate ones anymore because I knew we were missing one, but I can't remember if we got a different one.
I think I found it.
Oh, where at?
I don't know. I can't remember. I either found it or I got a new one.
It's all a blur.
It's all a blur.
I don't know. Don't remember.
Okay, I call to order the meeting of the Escalon Planning Commission on June fifteenth, six thirty P M. Will everybody join me in a flag salute, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sarkozy.
Here.
Commissioner Strowman.
Here.
Commissioner Danzinger.
Here.
Chair Casleanos is absent and excused. Vice Chair Willis.
Here. Thank you. If anyone has a cellphone, a pager, or a similar device, it needs to be on silent or vibrate, or turned off unless you're an on duty emergency responder. I don't see anybody at this time, but the council chambers are open and people can attend remotely and participate by going to go to meeting. We'll start with the consent calendar, approval of the minutes from the meeting of April thirteenth. Has everyone read them? Do they have any questions or corrections? Or is there a motion?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
John, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries for the approval of the minutes. First item, which is actually number two, is a variance application for one five two six Countrywood Lane. Understand, we have a member who wants to recuse himself for this item?
I do. Due to my proximity, I will recuse myself.
Okay. Does someone need to lead him out?
I will go ahead and do that. It's already been directed.
Can we get PD over here?
I'm gonna shut the door and make sure he can't get out.
And we'll get you back when you're done. So at one five two six Countrywood Lane, the project applicant is requesting approval of variance for a reduced side yard setback for a seven foot tall wood fence proposed between five feet to ten feet behind the property line slash sidewalk along Melissa Court. This project qualifies for a CQ class three categorical exemption under section one five three zero three E, new construction of accessory structures including fences. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Vice Chair Willis. Before us tonight is a variance for fifteen twenty six Countrywood as it applies for side yard setbacks. Some history on the property. The final map for this phase of the project was recorded in two thousand and five. It later became fifteen twenty six Countrywood. It's a seven thousand thirty seven square foot free form shaped lot. And there is a ten foot public utility easement recorded on the property. You can see that in the detail listed on the staff report. In two thousand and fourteen, Lafferty Communities came through and developed several of these lots. Mr. Chavez is the original purchaser of the home when it was built in two thousand and fourteen. And here's a detail of the approved plot plan for that project. Mr. Chavez and the city have had multiple discussions through the years after they purchased the property. And we had discussions about fence setbacks, fence height, specifically how it applied to Melissa Court. And in the end, Mr. Chavez elected to construct a thirty six inch fence behind the property line on Melissa Court. That way, they could maximize the use of their rear yard. The property owners are now going to build a swimming pool in the backyard. And as such, they'd like to have more privacy than the short thirty six inch fence can offer. So we had some discussions again about fence height and setbacks. And the owners have decided to apply to the Planning Commission for a variance to have that seven foot fence within the fifteen foot side yard setback. In Exhibit D of the staff report, there are three different proposals for fencing location. Three fencing design options are labeled Option A, Option B, and Option C. Option A being the first choice of the homeowners, then Option B, and lastly, Option C. Because all the proposals have a wood fence, seven feet or less in height, they do not require a building permit. So if it is approved with the variance, they would be okay to go ahead and construct it without a building permit. It's not required. Just kind of a review or reminder what variances are. So when there is unusual hardships to a property in regards to their size, shape, dimensions, or if there's geographic, topographic, physical conditions on the property, property owners are allowed to apply for a variance to give them the same privileges on their property that other people in the same neighborhood would enjoy that don't have those hardships. In order for Planning Commission to approve a variance, they have to make certain findings. And those are listed here on page four, A, B, C, and D. And so we'll go through each of those findings and how the property can apply to those. So finding A is that there's special circumstances applicable to the property which don't apply to other properties in the same vicinity, under the same zone. And in the applicant's letter, they describe special circumstances related to the shape of their lot that other lots in the same neighborhood do not have. Most corner lots in the R one low density zone are rectangular shaped, and you can see that on the left picture. Corner lot, ninety degree angles. And then on the right is the applicant's property. And you can see that as you come towards the rear yard at the end of the house, the lot curves in. And that's because they are on a court, and the length of the street in the court is very short. So that curve, the bulb of the court, cuts into their backyard. There are two other houses in the whole subdivision that have this same issue. Finding B is that the special circumstances are related to the property, not the financial or personal, personal conditions of the applicant. And that there's no self imposed condition that's a result of actions taken by the present owner or his predecessor. And so the special circumstance of the curve of the lot, it is related to the shape of the property. It's not the personal condition of the applicant. However, in response to the second portion of the finding, the curve of the lot was self imposed by the original developer as this is how they designed their final map and how it was recorded. Lafferty Communities, who built the house in two thousand and fourteen, was aware of the setback requirements because the original six foot fence was placed fifteen feet behind the property line. And the property line on this property is right behind the sidewalk. That's where the property line starts. Finding C is that the granting of the variance doesn't constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with limitations on other properties in the area. And the curved shape of the lot is unique to the subdivision and only three lots in those subdivision. Therefore, approval of a variance is not granting a special privilege. And the last finding for, to approve a variance is that the result would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or material, materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. The city does not foresee that approval of this variance would be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or injurious to properties or improvements in the area. The city engineer looked at options A, B, and C as presented in Exhibit D, and he didn't find any of the plans to be a hindrance to traffic site visibility. The twenty five foot corner triangle is clear. Where the applicants are proposing the fence is, is pretty far back on the side yard. And so it doesn't affect the intersection and traffic being able to see. Also, that intersection is a four way stop sign. And so that helps, everybody comes to a stop so that there's clear visibility. The fire department, this project was sent to the fire department, and they did not have any comments or concerns about approving the variance. Planning staff does want to note that the farther back from the property line a fence is located, the more aesthetically pleasing it is for the neighborhood, which is why there's the fifteen foot setback for site visibility and aesthetics. The closer the fence comes to the property line, more landscape area is lost, and there's a bit less beautification to the area. The city shared the variance application with other city departments, as well as outside agencies, to see if there was any comments or concerns. Modesto Irrigation District is the only agency who sent a response letter that had a concern about the project. They did encourage the city to not allow a fence in the ten foot public utility easement to avoid potential issues in the future. MID's letter is attached in Exhibit E. And just some informational information, a public utility easement was recorded on the property, and that's very common in newer subdivisions. Almost all of them have a ten foot public utility easement. It is listed in Escalon Municipal Code as something that's required in new subdivisions. And the P U E is recorded so that the dry utilities, electricity, gas, internet, can be located underground in that area. And it says that it's, they're put in for the purpose of installing utilities, private and public, planting strips, and other public purposes. And the municipal code, even though Modesto Irrigation is asking that the fence not be allowed in the ten foot P U E, the Escalon Municipal Code sets requirements for that public utility easement. And it says, no person other than a public utility shall erect, construct, or place any building or structure except fences or walls on a public utility easement. So our municipal code does allow fences and walls in that ten foot P U E, which is a bit of a contradiction to the utility who is asking that we don't allow it, but our code does allow it. However, the city wants the homeowners to be aware that if the variance is approved and the fence is located there, you are putting a facility in the recorded ten foot public utility easement. And so a utility company, whether it's PG&E, MID, they can come through, remove the fence. They don't have to give you warning. They don't, they can take it out. They can charge you for removing it because it is in their ten foot P U E, and they're not responsible, responsible for putting it back in. Any other responses received by, from other departments and agencies are either attached to the staff report or incorporated in the conditions of approval. Staff did receive an anonymous letter from a resident who noticed the relocation of fencing on several properties in the subdivision. And they were concerned about the fair and impartial enforcement of fencing regulations. And so a copy of that letter is included as Exhibit F. Staff advertised this public hearing in the newspaper, and it ran on June second. On June third, staff mailed every property owner and tenant within three hundred feet of the subject site that same copy of the public hearing notice. And we did not receive any phone calls or visits in the office as a result of that mailing. Planning Commission's decision tonight begins a ten business day appeal period, and that expires at five P M on June twenty ninth. Staffs reviewed the comments received from all agencies, and the following items serve as the proposed conditions of approval. Moving forward, the Planning Commission shall take the following steps. Open the public hearing and take public testimony. Close the public hearing. Discuss and vote on the variance. If the variance is granted, Planning Commission shall make the findings required for seventeen five seven oh three oh for variances. Find the project class three exempt and authorize staff to file the notice of exemption with the county recorder and approve the application with the conditions of approval proposed below or modified as Planning Commission sees fit. Specific conditions listed in the staff report. If Planning Commission chooses to approve the variance, you can select Option A, B, or C. Those are the fencing proposals in Exhibit D. If Planning Commission chooses not to approve the Plan A, B, or C, Planning Commission could give a set number of the setback to be behind the property line. Variance is specific to this project and runs with the land if the project is modified, meaning if the applicants wish to move the fence somewhere else in the ten foot, in the fifteen foot setback, they would have to come back for a variance amendment. And then just again, that the applicants are aware if this is recorded that the utilities have a right to remove, charge, and not reinstall the obstruction. And that's it. If there's any questions, staff is here. The applicants are also in the audience for questions during public comment.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff before we go to the public hearing?
No.
John?
No.
I'll open it up to the applicant or any other interested party to step up and identify himself or herself and tell us what you think.
I'm Michael Chavez.
Hi, Nikki. We live there. Just want to know if you guys have any questions, concerns?
How do you feel about the fact that the, the utility company can disrupt whatever you put in if it's within the easement for the utility company?
When I read that, I, I was aware. They did actually come out and mark all utilities when they wrote that letter. We didn't see any markings on that side of the house except for where our water line was, our sprinklers. So if they remove it, we'll, we'll bring it up with them, but I don't think it'll.
It would, it would be horrible, but you know, we would deal with it if it happened, you know, at the time.
Now, when you, you put the three foot fence within the setback, and you weren't thinking of a swimming pool at that time because it was only a three foot fence. It just expanded the backyard, but now you're thinking of a swimming pool, so you need a taller fence.
Yes.
And our, and our dogs, we have two, two.
Escape artists.
That like to jump over the fence.
They do, yeah. So it's a bit of a challenge, but, but we've managed with the, with the fence as it is now. But it would be nice to have a larger fence and the privacy, yeah.
I have one safety concern. If you look at nineteen seventy five Melissa Court, the driveway is on the left hand side of the property. If you have a seven foot tall fence and somebody's backing out of that driveway, they're not going to see what's coming either on the sidewalk or into Melissa Court. So to me, the, the visibility is hampered by a taller fence.
We, to, to respond to your, your statement, we did talk to, that's Peter. He's, he did sign the, we had like a little petition, yeah, we took around all the neighbors to, to, just to see how, what their thoughts are and were on the, on the situation. He did, him and his wife were very nice about it. They both said, we really don't foresee any issue of us, any hindrance at all with him pulling out or any safety issues. And he did sign the petition, and along with all the other neighbors, except for one that wasn't home, and she's kind of across the street from us. But he didn't, he didn't really have an issue with it.
But he backed out now with a three foot fence there, so he's got visibility. With a taller fence, it's going to cut into the visibility.
I imagine it, it would to some extent. There is, there is a grassy area and the, and the sidewalk. So there is a, a substantial amount of space. It would be obviously less space for him to, but I just.
But the, the fence that they're proposing is going to be set back from where the current three foot fence is, right?
Correct.
Yeah, not fifteen feet, but five, six, eight, nine.
Yeah, yeah. So the current three foot fence is at the edge, though, isn't it, at the sidewalk?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it would be, so the three foot fence, there's also bushes and a tree there, and.
He doesn't have a problem right now.
He, he really has never had a problem with pulling out. There is a, a pretty good size.
You see the two tall trees?
Leland Cypress tree. That's there. And the fence would be, i- if, if approved, it would be right, right around that area where the larger tree is.
I have Option A up on the screen, and here on the top of the screen is where that neighbor is. So in Option A, they're proposing ten feet from behind the back of sidewalk.
So the sidewalk is how wide, and the city tree planting strip is how wide?
There's all those.
It's four feet, four feet and four feet.
Four and a half feet.
Four feet.
So that's eighteen feet back?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I did measure those all with a tape measure.
And are you, do you prefer A, B, or C?
It's, frankly, it's up to you guys. I do like B better, simply because it goes with the curve of the sidewalk. I think it would be more aesthetically appealing to the city if it stayed with the curve, since it was built with a curve. Then the builder did put up the fence in the first place. We are going to have it professionally landscaped on the outside.
And the fence is professionally built, also. We have a contractor already.
But that's, it's completely up to you guys. I put everything, so I gave you guys the choice. I didn't, I wanted, I really wanted an approval of something. I put everything on there that I could think of that would make it so we have our covered patio space for us and so we could build a pool. And that will be completely behind the setback. It won't even, yeah.
If you go, before that, a couple of the pictures.
Right there, the trees.
Yeah, I was going to say that one there shows where the Cypress tree is. That's probably going to be almost the corner of that.
It absolutely will be the corner of the.
Close to the corner of the fence.
Yeah, it's like six, that's about, from trunk to corner of the thirty six inch fence, it's about six feet.
Is there a fence between where that car is and your backyard?
Yes, yeah, there's the, the regular, the built, the fence that was built before.
Six and a half foot fence, yes. So, so the other one's going to match.
Well, but it's three feet. There's, there's, there must be a three foot stretch.
A little bit, yeah, the six, the six feet or so.
Right, that picture, no, it's down a little bit.
I think it does.
Right there. So that goes in.
Behind the Cypress tree, and it matches up with the tall fence.
And you could see on the top right corner of that picture that, that's where the Leland Cypress starts in, and that's like, and that Cypress has been there for how long?
Since we built that. I don't know. Five years?
Five years, maybe a little longer than that. And yeah, Peter has been, we're all really close friends in that, that, that neighborhood, that cul-de-sac, so it's.
How would you respond to someone saying that you're, that you're, what was the language? Deviating from the norm, not, not doing what everybody else is doing in the subdivision, that your yard is an exception and it shouldn't be, the fence shouldn't be an exception from everybody else? I can't find that letter now.
It's Exhibit F.
Okay, someone, an anonymous person drove by, and he likes to see all the, he likes to see consistency in the side yards and his offenses, and in the fences, the heights and the setbacks.
I was just able to read that letter tonight, so. Well, like we stated in our letter, our reasoning for this is because the, the lot that we're on, the fence cut through our backyard. It really did. I took a picture of it before we took it down. And I had six feet of a patio. So I walked out, and I literally could touch my house and the fence to go to my backyard. And then it cut even more, and all I could see was fence. And I would say to somebody, how would you like that? You know, if everybody's fence went from the corner of their house and it cut in like that.
But the fence was there when you bought it, when you moved in?
No, it was an empty lot.
We bought an empty lot. They built it. They did not let us know of the, of the setback or anything of that nature. And it was too late by the time we saw the fence. The house was done. And we were homeless at that point because they had sold our house.
Our, the, the fence was the last thing constructed, and we had no idea, we didn't, we were unaware of the setback laws and easements. We really didn't, and we were unprepared when we walked out into the backyard and saw that there was such a small area from patio door, and it just kind of bottle, bottlenecked in, you know, to like this little opening. And then it went into the backyard. And to answer your question, how would I respond to that? I, I would say, look at the circumstances that we're, that we were dealt with, you know, that maybe the house should have been turned a little bit, you know, to, to, to accommodate the structure of the lot. You know, it's just a circumstance that we were dealt with, and we were just hoping, you know, like, we just asked, you know, to see if we can make things just a little bit easier, a little better, and.
That question, Commissioner Willis?
Go ahead.
Staff, can you go to Exhibit D as a dog? Please. First one. Is there a reason why you want the five foot down the side there? What is, I mean, I, I see where you identified as patio, but what is that other rectangle sticking outside the patio?
Okay, so.
That, yes.
That's a stair.
A stair?
A stair.
So.
The lot is shaped like this, and we had to build a stair so we can actually hit ground right there from the patio.
So the, to answer your question, the, the five foot section there is because we had a, we had a, it curves in, we had a patio constructed, permitted, and we're trying to maintain like a, an even, like an even curvature of the.
That was an even straight line. And that's the way the, the sidewalk curved in. It just hit that way.
So the, the patio kind of overhangs that, and we're trying to keep the fence from going underneath the actual patio area?
So not only will the fence be in. So not only will the fence be in the easement, but also that patio is, is also considered in the public utility easement, correct?
It, it is, but not, um, it's, the way it was structured, we had to have an engineer come out to structure it. So the um, the, the, the beam that holds it, it's kinda cantilevered. So they set the beam back much further and then another was a very expensive project.
The patio is permitted, I remember this, um, because there is the fifteen-foot setback. It applies to the fence, it applied to the patio also. So they were able to put the post at the fifteen-foot setback to meet requirements and the eve is allowed to hang over.
So the fence will go under, the proposed layout of the fence will go underneath?
Right along, right along.
What you're seeing in the line is actually concrete and I could not shape that any differently. The system that I used didn't allow it. The triangle over where it says patio is actually where our patio is. That is all cement.
That's all cement, yeah.
And that's gonna be ripped out.
The outer line here is cement and then the inner line here is patio.
Yeah. Right, that's patio, correct.
Patio cover is the inside line. Cement is the outside line.
So. Right, that's correct. And that little corner in the northeast, northeast corner, that little triangle, that's gonna be cut out to accommodate, if, if approved, the, the fence line.
So is there a real reason why you want that, that side to go the whole way down to almost halfway through your house?
The fence line?
The five-foot, the five-foot, we didn't ask, we, we thought.
I added a side yard, that's it.
We just needed a dog runner, something, but we didn't, we wanted a side yard. We wanted grass and we want something that looks nice. We, we didn't wanna ask for more than what we needed.
Well, I can't tell you what to do, but that little section there, I don't know if you know about building materials, but that section right there is probably gonna cost you a lot of money.
We already got our um, estimate for the fence if approved.
And I can tell you ma'am, that estimates are only valid for twenty-four hours, so.
I'm not worried about.
Just giving you a heads up that that's.
No, no, and we appreciate it, we appreciate it.
Not at this point. I've given twelve hundred dollars to the city. I gotta carry everything through.
Yeah, we're just, we, as much as we wanted to ask for more, we, we did, we didn't need it. We really didn't. And, you know, and we did take into consideration on what we wanted to put outside, you know, grass strips, like nice trees. I mean, she has so many ideas for landscaping and to give to the landscaper, whatnot.
So back to the patio. The area that um, beside this step and where the arrow is right now, that's all concrete currently?
It is.
And you're intending to leave it concrete?
Because, yes, we are. Because there's gonna be a fence right outside of that uh,
There's gonna be a gate right there.
A gate, a gate, excuse me, a gate outside of this step.
That's where the gate's gonna be located. Or side entrance, not on the front of the five-foot. Right on the, right next to that step.
Yeah. So they're not doing it at the front of the house, they're doing it at the side there, for the back, for the side entrance.
Sean, you were contractor, right? I've been in these meetings before, so you.
I'm a construction manager.
Yeah, so I, I've been in the, I, I knew it was gonna come, so I was just.
No, I'm just, honestly, I'm just concerned about uh, the cost of the material, 'cause.
We know wood is like gold right now. We do, and it's.
I know, wood is gold. We see it going down the street and we're like, "Oh, look, a little gold."
You know, and, and talking to our, we do, we do say that.
And it's bad timing.
It is. It's just that it's something that we wanted for so long and uh, and we're willing to. I, I work two jobs. I work construction and I drive a train and, I mean, excuse me, I work at a automotive repair and drive a train and uh, to try to make these ends meet.
Michael, now that I hear about a gate, is that, are, is that a secure location for a gate? Are you, is it visible from anywhere in the house?
From, yes, it is visible from the house. So there are um.
Go to the picture right before the, no, the other way. So you can see the edge of the, the patio there um, and the, how they have their overhang. So the fence looks like it's gonna be almost out from where that.
Yeah, where that corner is. And uh, so the corner of the, the roof line, it'll be just outside of the roof line. And then um, right where the barbecue pit is, that's where the staircase goes down. And uh, the fence is visible from, from the house. There are windows both on the um, well, you can see the patio slider there, the window, and then also from the um, there's a window.
On the outside.
On the.
On the side of the house.
Yeah, on the side of the house, yeah. Several, several of them.
There it is, right there in the second picture.
So I have one other comment and that is, um, really appreciate you putting that three-foot fence, especially on a quarter lot, but this is the first time that I've seen it as a planning commissioner. Boy, do we have to do some discussion. 'Cause man, you have no privacy whatsoever. None.
We.
Well, we, uh, you could say that we chose that though, right?
Yeah, but.
We gave it up, we gave up our privacy for space.
So then it doesn't really matter, but Staff, when they put in this three-foot fence, was that submitted with the permit uh, for the patio?
That did not need approval. I'm sorry.
The fence didn't require a permit?
Okay.
If I remember right, the fence came first, patio came after.
Yeah, so, I had no idea about the setback law, so I was like, "We're gonna hack the fence down." Like, I'm, I, I'm a pretty hard worker and I'll, I'll, you know, sweat and tears. So uh, I decided to construct my own fence and it was taller than that. And then the city was like, "You can't do that." And I was like, "Okay." I got my chainsaw out and just started hacking away. As you can see the fence boards, there's a uh, top fence posts, like the dog ear, and then it goes flat and then dog ear and flat. So I returned some of the material and used only half of the fence boards.
You need those fence boards to do it.
And glued back together?
Uh, so.
We did have trees there um, to try to gain privacy, but somebody complained about those, so we had to chop them down.
And they were against the, the city code?
I guess they were not tr- city-approved trees.
But even technically, even that three-foot fence is in violation of city code, right? Because it has to be.
The three-foot fence is okay. Thirty-six inches in the fifteen-foot setback.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for making the effort.
Well, we, we try to accommodate. It's not like I, I, I didn't wanna, when we moved here, we moved in from series and I didn't want to uh, I didn't wanna stir the pot, you know what I mean? Like, I don't wanna move to a place and be like, "Well, I bought the property, I wanna do what I wanna do." I, I wanna follow procedures and codes and stuff and we just didn't wanna uh, what do I call it, any problems? So we've tried to buy as much as possible.
Any other questions?
I, I would make one statement that I really appreciate the effort you put into this. Um, and thank you for coming to the planning commission and the city, uh, looking for a permit rather than just going on like you just said. And so uh, I appreciate that and I think Staff probably does too.
You guys are very welcome.
And thank you Kirk for stopping by. Come in this evening and talk to me. He came to see the property.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll bring her back to the commission for discussion. Looking at the original view, it does look really nice, but I can see where it would uh, hamper use of the backyard and and uh, the comment is made by MID or, no, it was Planning Staff. The farther back from the property line of fences located, the more aesthetically pleasing it is. And that's true, but if you just cut down the fifteen to nine or ten, it still can have some landscaping and look aesthetically pleasing and be beautiful for the neighborhood. And if the engineer doesn't have a problem with somebody backing out of the driveway in nineteen seventy-five, maybe I shouldn't either.
I also noticed there's a tree right there in the um, the planter strip too.
Yeah.
Um, from that, for that driveway. I would think that may cause more.
It looks narrow in, in the trunk though, doesn't it?
It is, yes.
Are you ready to close the public hearing?
Anybody else wanna speak up on this issue? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. I don't have a, a problem with a taller fence. I, I didn't want it too close to the, to the roadway, but it sounds like that might work.
Sorry, uh, Commissioner Willis, I have one more question for the applicant. So in these various options, um, actually not between all of them, but between option A and B, what's the dimension from the edge of the house to the edge of the fence? Do you know what that is?
Well, at the, at the corner of the house there.
Yeah, at the corner of the house to the edge of the fence.
The house, oh, five feet.
Yeah.
It's at the bottom.
No, at the corner, at, at the corner of the house, up a little bit.
This is the patio, this is the patio.
From there to the pink line, what is that dimension?
Um.
Yeah, but that's not how.
I don't know. It's a patio cover.
That's patio.
It's a, it's, there's a, what's it called? The, the, the overhang?
Overhang.
Yeah.
Yeah, the overhang.
Pergola?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
I couldn't mention.
Okay, so that's the edge of a overhang, not an, the edge of the house.
No, that's the edge of his patio cover.
That, that little triangle in the northeast corner of the patio, that um, it's the, it doesn't exist.
I couldn't take it out.
Yeah, that's just sea, it's just, there's just cement there. There isn't an actual.
It's the outline of the house.
I was just thinking of, if that's like two feet, how, I mean.
I didn't.
No, but it's not.
Well, the.
No building.
Through there.
There's no building there.
This, this is the edge of the house.
Got it.
Here.
Okay.
And I think the post is uh, seven feet from the corner of the house on the inside corner. So plenty of room.
All right, thank you once again.
Thank you.
I'll close the public hearing again. Any further discussion, any motion?
I got a question of Staff. The, the little area there that will now not be covered by the three-foot fence, they're gonna landscape. Do they need to do anything? Uh, do they have to get prior approval from you? Uh, what goes in there or?
Um, according to muello, rehabilitation of landscaping does require a permit, has to meet muello if it's more than five hundred square feet of area.
I, is, is that?
I haven't measured that.
As long as everybody knows, you know, all these little things that are, that are out there. And you might wanna think about drought-resistant materials there too with the way things are going. That, that was all my questions.
So I guess my comment is uh, I understand we're trying to give them more backyard. Um, I definitely do not like option C. 'Cause I feel like option C is, is created to try to get maximize as much space within the, the PUE, but.
Yeah, that was for you.
I really wouldn't like that.
I didn't like it either, but I had, I had to offer.
Question of Staff.
But it's not my house, so.
I'm looking at exhibit E, the MID um, layout of uh, undergrounding.
Right.
Conductors and everything. It looks like it's on the others, there's something on the other side of Melissa Court, but there isn't something on this side? There's just something at the southwest corner?
This is lot one eighteen, this is the um, subject property. And MID does not show any power lines, transformers, conductors on the side that they wanna put the fence. The neighbor across the street has some on their front yard, uh, but on, and, and their property does have some sort of box conductors in the front corner of their lot, but nothing on the side that they're gonna put the fence.
So even though, I mean, that's a blanket uh, letter that MID issued as far as don't build anything over the easement.
Right, they provide the letter saying that we have a ten-foot PUE, we don't want you to put anything in it to avoid problems in the future.
But they won't have to get there.
But they also include the map to show you where their facilities exactly are.
But chances are they don't have to get in there, I mean, 'cause there's nothing there.
Nothing there currently.
Currently, currently, okay.
Right. I can't speak for their plans in the future, although the subdivision is already built out. But I can't speak for how likely it is that they would actually have to do something to it.
Okay, thank you. I also don't like option C. Um, I guess I lean toward B if I'm going to approve it. It, it concerns me and I think Commissioner Danziger is also concerned that we keep getting applications for variances and we have to solve issues by granting variances. Um, we've got a code, we've got what people should do, should not do, what you can do, what you can't do, and, and yet we have to keep granting variances. So then people see that we're granting variances and then they want a variance to do what they wanna do. But it's not like these people hoodwinked us and, you know, or came in and, you know, it, it's just, this is the way it is. Um. Is there a motion? Is there further discussion?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the variance. Uh, either A or B would be fine by me and it sounds like you too, Commissioner Willis. And uh, so uh, I think we, I make the findings as required for section seventeen point five seven, point zero three zero for variances. Find that the project SEQA Class Three Categorial Exempt under section fifteen three oh three E, new construction or accessory structures including fence, and authorize Staff to file a SEQA notice of exemption and approve the application uh, with the conditions of approval as proposed and modified by the planning commission. And the only additional one I would have would be the landscape that uh, you meet the city.
With the muello wording in.
Yep.
Okay, now in the conditions of approval, it does say A, B, or C. And you said B or A or B?
A or B.
We need to be specific at this point?
Yes.
Applicant.
Well, if the applicant wants B, then we'll, let's make it B.
Okay, B. And then, so the varying setback as per, in the drawing. Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Yes, get our.
You're welcome to stay for the next item if you want, but because your project is, is done and decided, you're welcome to leave if you want. No one will be offended if you go.
It's been a long time, so.
Thank you, guys.
So, before we get into this next, uh, I, actually, I'll wait till Commissioner comments, then I'll ask my question.
I think you had a question for them.
Oh, okay. Question for Staff, so. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Uh, number three, variance application. I didn't say the number with the other one, but this is two one dash seven four six. Address one five zero four Deborah Circle. Project applicant is requesting a variance for reduced side yard setback for a six-foot, ten-inch tall wood fence. Applicant is proposing the fence be located six feet eleven inches behind the property line slash sidewalk along Swanson Drive. This project qualifies for a SEQA Class Three Categorical Exemption under section one five three zero three E, new construction of accessory structures including fences. We have a staff report, please.
Thank you, yes. Tonight, we have another variance for fencing, theme of the night. And so, the project applicant's requesting a variance for reduced side yard setback for a wood fence. And they're requesting it be located six feet 11 inches behind the property line, which is behind the sidewalk along Swanson Drive. The project does qualify for a SEQA exemption, 15303E, which is for fences. This phase of Westwood Country, the final map was recorded in 2005, and it later becomes 1504 Deborah Circle. The lot is 7,396 square feet, and it is rectangular in shape. It also has a 10-foot public utility easement along Swanson Drive and Deborah Circle. And here is a picture of the lot from the final map. This lot was developed in 2019 by Countrywood Development LLC with a single-family home. Mr. Shepherd, the applicant of the variance, is the original purchaser of the home in 2019 when it was constructed. And details of the plot plan for construction of the new home can be seen below. In April, the city received an inquiry about a fence at 1504 Deborah Circle that had been relocated within the 15-foot setback. So the city went out and took a look and confirmed the fence had been relocated from its originally constructed area. Staff reached out to the homeowners to educate them about the setback requirements. And we let them know the available options because the fence was, was nearing completion of his relocated area. So we let them know that they could put the fence back out of the 15-foot setback area. They can keep the fence in the setback area, but reduce the height to 36 inches. Or they could apply to the Planning Commission for approval of a variance. And the owners chose to apply for a variance to keep it at its currently installed location and at the current height. The applicant's requesting approval of the variance for reduced side yard setback along Swanson Drive. It is six feet 10 inches tall, and it's located six feet 11 inches behind the property line. Because it's less than seven feet tall, it does not require a building permit. As discussed earlier, variances are intended to resolve unusual physical hardships that result from size, shape, dimensions of a lot, location of existing structures, or other physical conditions on the site that would deprive it of the same privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity. In order for Planning Commission to approve a variance, several findings have to be made. And those are listed A, B, C, and D, and we'll go through each one as it applies to the property. Finding A is that there are special circumstances applicable to the property that don't generally apply to other properties in the same vicinity under the same zone. And the applicant indicated that their special circumstance is related to the location of the lot. The lot's located at the north end of Swanson Drive. It's a dead-end road at their location. It terminates into a block wall. Behind the block wall, you can see in the picture, so here's the house. Here's Swanson Drive, it deadends into a concrete block wall. Behind the block wall is P&amp;L's driveway that goes from McHenry back to their plant. And then, behind that, this is city-owned property. It's our storm basin. Marvell Shopping Center is right here. The city engineer has confirmed there's no possibility this end of Swanson Drive will be extended in the future because it would cross private property belonging to P&amp;L, and it would go into the city's storm basin. And there's no reason to have public access to this location. So that dead-end street is going to remain a dead-end street. Finding B is that the special circumstance relates to the property, not personal condition of the applicant, and that the condition is not self-imposed by the present owner or his predecessor. And the location of the lot is a special circumstance related to the physical property. It's not a condition of, a personal condition of the applicant. Countrywood Development, the owner of the property was aware of the setback for the original six-foot fence because it was originally located 15 feet behind the property before it was relocated. Finding C, the granting of the variance shall not constitute a grant of special privilege, inconsistent with the limitations upon other property in the vicinity under the same zone classification. The location of the lot and how it terminates to a dead end at Swanson Drive with no possibility of extension, it is unique to the subdivision. This is the only house in the whole subdivision that has this type of circumstance. Therefore, approval of the variance wouldn't be a grant of special privilege. And finding D, that the result would not be detrimental to health, safety, or welfare. And the city doesn't foresee that the approval of the variance would be detrimental to the public health, safety, welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. The city engineer evaluated the location, not a hindrance to site visibility for traffic. It's perpendicular to the block wall opposite the intersection. There's no, no risk of cars not being able to see. And the fire department did not have any comments or concerns either. The city shared this variance application with other city departments and outside agencies. Modesto Irrigation District sent a response letter encouraging the city not to allow the fence in the 10-foot public utility easement to avoid potential issues in the future. And a copy of MID's letter is attached in Exhibit E. Public utility easements are recorded on subdivision maps. It's part of municipal code requirements. It's for the purpose of installing utilities, specifically dry utilities, electric, gas, internet, that are, utilities are both privately and publicly owned, planting strips and other public purposes. The Escalon Municipal Code allows fences in the setbacks. Modesto Irrigation requested that the city not let a fence be put in there, but our municipal code does allow them to be there. Staff wants the Planning Commission and the applicants to be aware that if the variance is approved in accordance with the public utility easement, if the fence is located within that 10 feet, any utility or MID would be allowed to remove the obstruction. They don't have to notify the homeowner. They can come in and take out the fence. They can charge the owner for the removal of the obstruction, and they're not responsible for reinstalling it. So just be aware of that. Any other responses received from departments and agencies are attached in the staff report or their comments are incorporated in the conditions of approval. Staff did receive an anonymous letter from an Escalon resident who noticed relocation of fencing on several properties in Westwood, and they were concerned about fair and impartial enforcement of fencing regulations. Copy of that letter is included as Exhibit F. Staff conducted appropriate public hearing outreach. We put an ad in the Escalon Times that appeared on June 2nd. On June 3rd, every property owner and tenant within 300 feet of the subject site received a copy of the public hearing notice in the mail. And we did not receive any responses as a result of that mailing. Planning Commission's decision tonight begins a 10-business-day appeal period, which expires June 29th, 2021. Staffs reviewed the comments and put together the following items to serve as the conditions of approval. Moving forward, Planning Commission shall take the following steps. Open the public hearing and take public testimony. Close the public hearing. Vote on the variance. If the variance is granted, Planning Commission shall make the findings for variances. Find the project SEQA exempt, authorize staff to file the notice of exemption, and approve the application with the conditions of approval below, or as modified as needed. Specific conditions to the project. Approval of the variance as presented would allow the fence at six feet 11 inches behind the sidewalk on Swanson Drive, as shown in the plans. The variance is specific to the project. If the applicants want to relocate the fence again somewhere within that 15-foot setback, they would have to come for a variance amendment. Applicants understand that they're constructing a facility in the recorded 10-foot PUE. And so, that obstruction may be removed by a utility. They may be charged for the removal of it, and they would, the utility would not be responsible for reinstalling it. And then, and we'll have to look at the picture, I think there's a picture. Outside of the fence that was relocated, there is bark, but the plants haven't been replaced yet. So just a condition of approval to put some plants back in that landscape strip between Swanson Drive and the newly relocated fence.
City-approved plants.
If it's less than 500 square feet, they are on their own. More than that, we regulate. So staff is here if you have any questions. The property owner is also in the audience if you have any questions for them.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff?
Yeah. Are there CCNRs out there in Countrywood?
Westwood Country has CCNRs.
Do the CCRs make any mention of setback requirements for corner lots or any other lots?
The city doesn't enforce CCNRs, so we...
Well, I'm not saying you enforce it.
We don't read them, we don't enforce them. They don't have an effect on, on our decisions.
That was, well, you know, you avoid issues coming forward with education prior to sale, I would hope. When I purchased my house in Belterra, we, we were told nothing goes in the backyard. So you put something, a shed in that backyard, no matter what size, you're on your own. And again, yeah, the city's not enforcing any of that. But if there was a neighbor that went around like apparently there is in this neighborhood, they could create an issue. Does this person work code enforcement for the city? Well, I'm just wondering because is this the only neighborhood that this has come up? Or is somebody canvassing the city of Escalon looking for fence violations?
We've had code enforcement on fences in the past. It's been a while.
That is our newest subdivision, though. So as far as things existing, it's noticeable in that, in that neighborhood when something's changed because that's, that's a newer neighborhood. Whereas the older neighborhoods, it's not as apparent or maybe because there's already other neighborhoods or other houses that have things done. And there's ongoing construction in that neighborhood too. So I would, I would say if I had to, if I had to guess, that probably draws some attention to it being the newer neighborhood.
Yeah, and some of the older places, if they quote-unquote break or against the code, they, they could be grandfathered in because of how old they are.
We don't, we don't like to use the word grandfather.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes.
What's the current term?
New construction.
So it's, so it's typically existing, if it's something that's existed in that, in that fashion for a long time. Unless they modify it to where it's no longer existing, that's, that's what triggers new. And that's what triggers application, application of current municipal code requirements is if there was something that was existing and they've modified it.
So if somebody were going around looking for violations and they saw existing situations, I mean, how would they know if it was?
It would, it would, it would typically have to, to look new and if it was existing. I mean, staff, we investigate a lot of those items. And so, we, we have our ways either somewhere on the file or somewhere. We, we take the evidence that we find or information that we find, and we, and we try to make a, you know, an educated, reasonable.
Assessment?
Yes, assessment of, of whether it's existing or whether it's new.
Any other questions of staff?
Three.
Go.
I just want to kind of second what Commissioner Danziger said. And can't believe I'm actually quoting this in a public meeting, but I think Alanis Morissette said it best, isn't it ironic that we're dealing with two fence situations in the same neighborhood at the same planning commission? Second question is, this one is different than the previous one because this one is already built, correct? And the other one was not constructed?
That is correct.
Okay, and the third question was the six-foot 11 dimension. Is that the overall height of the fence, or is that the height of the gate?
That's, that's from the ground. So there's, there's about 10 inches of.
Sorry, you should ask that question to the applicant during public comment. He'll ask it during public comment.
Nope, not a problem.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Oh, I see why you're asking about the gate now.
Yeah.
Mark?
Yeah, I would just ask, the fence is on the, in the easement. But understanding that the concrete that the fence is on, which my understanding is new also, that's in the easement, which, you know.
The city's not wor, MID might be worried about the concrete, but it would be the same situation if it's within their 10-foot PUE, and they want to do something in that area, they will take it out.
Well.
Should we have a map of this particular?
From MID?
It's in here.
We do.
Yeah. E, where'd it go? Yeah, in E, it shows the red lines are on the other side of Swanson or on the south side of this property, but nothing.
So here's the applicant's property. They do have some sort of line along the front of their property, but there is not currently anything that goes down the Swanson Drive side.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay, in that case, I'll open the public hearing and ask for any one who wants to speak on this issue to step up, identify yourself, and let us know your thoughts.
Hello, my name's Amber Shepherd, and I brought my father-in-law, Jonathan, not Jonathan, Shepherd.
John Shepherd. Yeah, so as far as the gate you were asking, so the gate is actually six foot 10. The fence is six foot, and then it sits on top of about eight inches of concrete. But that's because that property is sloped.
So then, I guess my question for staff is, do we really have to grant the variance for the height? Because technically, the height is within acceptable limits, correct?
The height is okay, correct. The only thing that the variance is on tonight is within the setback.
Which happens to be six foot 11 or whatever it is.
Height was 610, and the setback is 611, so it's very close.
Yeah.
We thought we were right there.
Yeah, we thought we were right on the mark.
I was, I was confused when it talked about the grading. The grading went the wrong direction. But then to put cement in beyond into the setback, I'm not sure I understood that. Why not just do the cement to up to the setback line?
Well, we, we assumed we had the setback correct, but it wasn't, so.
We thought it went from.
The curb of the street.
Property line to the curb of the street.
Correct.
Not the middle of the street.
Right. So the setback is from, from the sidewalk to, to the, to the house. And we assumed it was from the curb, the 15-foot setback. So that's what we measured, and we came in a foot and a half more from that, just thinking that would be better, and it ended up being incorrect.
Now, is this, is the cement helping with the drainage back there?
Oh, yes. My, my children don't come in muddy. My dogs don't come in muddy, like.
That's how this started.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mud.
Yes, lots of mud.
And, and I agree, there's no safety hazard here. The visibility isn't a problem and, okay, any other questions or?
So, is the entire, so we're looking at this view of the concrete. Is that whole area concrete now?
Correct, yeah, it runs behind the, behind the house to where the existing small little step that came out the back door was. So it's about nine and a half yards of concrete that we poured.
We have a little curve to our master, and so we ended the concrete right in front of like our master. But you can't, it like goes in front of the con, or in, in front of the slider, which a slider is right there by that wall.
Right.
Because that's my living room, is that window.
And the great issue was from east to west, the water drain, but they also graded it wrong from north to south. So it was six inches higher at P&amp;L wall, and everything drained towards the back door. So that, that became an issue. And when we put that concrete in, we actually added another drain in the grass to bring it out to the street off the existing drain.
Did this go in under permit?
No.
So you didn't come to the city and ask if?
No, no, sir.
Technically, it didn't need a permit.
Flatwork for the cement doesn't require a permit, and a fence under seven feet doesn't require a permit.
I'm talking about the end of the concrete next to, going to the sidewalk.
It is here.
Is that within the setback?
Well, I think we're a foot over, I think, or one foot.
It is within the 15-foot setback, but it doesn't require a permit.
How do you feel about adding landscaping between your fence and the sidewalk?
Oh, we plan on it. Our plants, well, we have a sidewalk, and then we have that dirt with, the plants died because of the water issue. So we plan on planting new plants and adding actually rock instead of the mulch.
And what if MID or some other utility company needs to have access and totally disrupt what you've put in?
They can disrupt it, I'll pay for it.
Yeah, I mean, we don't think that'll happen.
It's worth my backyard, honestly.
There's, there's, there shouldn't be anything in that area. The. There's, there's, there shouldn't be anything in that area. The hydrant terminates on the corner.
And they came out and looked and they...
The power's on the other side. There's no markings, no, no nothing on that side of the house, so...
Is this strictly for drainage or was there, is this designed to add on to square footage for your backyard like a pool?
No, no.
Oh, we're not adding a pool.
No, it was just because they had a small three-by-four patio and it was mud. All the grass turned to mud, drained wrong, so we just figured if we were gonna do it, we'd give them a decent patio for the girls.
Did you do the concrete yourself, sir?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic job.
Thank you.
Looks really, really good.
He did the fence, too.
Yeah.
Wow.
And we set the fence with, uh, um, CB six, uh, four-by-four. They're actually wet post holders, so the posts aren't into the, into the cement or into the ground.
So you, do you do this?
It's not gonna go anywhere.
Do you do this kind of work?
Uh, I'm, I'm kind of a semi-retired contractor, retired fireman.
Well, if you do, please make sure you check the setbacks in the future.
Yes, sir.
We're new to Escalon, obviously.
Welcome.
Yeah.
You picked a good town to move to.
I'm from Ripon, so I knew it was...
Welcome to the dark side.
Yeah. It is.
Is there anything else that you'd like to make sure we know?
Uh, no, ma'am. I, we would've put plants in, but we weren't even done and got the notice. So we just finished the fence and figured we'd wait and, and see how things turned out.
Okay.
And we thought about the three-foot fence, but with the little girls, that's kind of...
And I'm a dead end. That's a little scary for me.
Yeah.
So we're over by three feet, one inch? Is that what it is?
In regards to the ten-foot PUE?
No, I was just talking about the height of the fence.
No, the, yeah, the PUE, how far over are we?
Three.
So sidewalk to the fence is six foot, one inch.
Sidewalk to the fence is six, one, and so then, and the setback is ten.
Correct.
So three feet, eleven inches.
Almost four feet.
Any other questions of the applicant? No?
No questions. I, I think, I mean...
I'd like you to leave your card with the...
I could do that. You know where to find me.
And I would've bet you were with the fire department there. That's a fantastic must- have.
That's a good father-in-law.
Well, and that's, well, that's kind of why I did it. The kids don't have a lot of money. So I said, hey, I'll, I'll try and save you some money, but it ended up costing them a little more.
I would just say, I mean, it looks, it looks real good. Um, did the path on the front, too?
Oh, he did that.
Yeah.
So I'm confident that any landscaping you do along this side will look well.
Thank you.
And the PUE, just one comment there, if it runs in front, wouldn't they be taking out their driveway, too? If they had to do work?
And my whole front yard.
You know they would.
And unfortunately, the utilities don't care. Um, I was on a project one time where a homeowner put a gazebo within the PUE and they literally showed up with an excavator and picked it up with one scoop and picked it up and threw it away.
Wow.
Cause it was within the PUE.
Wow.
Granted, that was, uh, another utility that will remain nameless, but just use your mind and you'll understand what utility it is.
Just initials.
Yep, just initials.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Any questions or opinions or motions?
I, I, I just have a comment and, I mean, granted, it is within the PUE. But here's a situation where a homeowner is trying to better a situation that quite frankly, I feel should've been on the, uh, home builder. They should've figured it out and done something to resolve this for the, the homeowner. Um, so...
As far as the grading issue?
As far as the grading, I mean, people with small children enjoy their backyard. They don't like their kids going out and playing in mud pits all day long. And you could tell that it's done with quality in mind. They just didn't throw it up. So, um, I'm in favor of granting the variance. Plus, given the fact that it's a dead end, no one's ever gonna affect anything back in that court, ever. I prefer the person that drove through and submitted this to the city, I have no comment.
Any other comments or is there a motion or?
Commissioner, uh, Chairman, I will make a motion, uh, to grant the variance, um, and find that it's...
I put it on the screen.
Oh, okay. Uh, I'll find that the project is, uh, CEQA Class III, Cataclysm Exempt under Section fifteen-three-oh-three. New constructions of accessory structures, including fences, and authorize staff to file the CEQA Notice of Exemption and approve the application with the conditions of approval as proposed below, uh, with no modifications.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, administrative matters. Do we have any administrative matters?
You're welcome to stay or you're welcome to leave. It's up to you. No one will be affected.
I'll bring some cards in.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Hi, folks.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
We have none.
No administrative?
No? Matters from the audience? No? And we still have nobody on, uh?
Nobody's on, no.
Nobody loves us anymore.
We're all three, no.
Staff communications?
Yes, there, there we have a few items. Um, first, staff just wanted to update you that the city has received the plans for the big boy supermarket. Um, so those are currently under review. Um, we have been, uh, working, um, regarding senior housing and, and drafting of an RFQ or request for qualifications, uh, for senior housing development. Um, and so that will be going to council as a draft, uh, next week. And projects-wise, anything else stick out to you?
Nothing new.
It's been busy. Um, we have a lot of properties, vacant properties that are on the market right now. Um, so we're constantly fielding calls, um, for vacant properties on Main Street. We have a new one that went up over on Escalon Avenue, um, a couple that have been sitting on the market for quite a while. So it seems like that's our, our biggest phone call right now is just, what can I do here? What can I do here? Um, and so that's been going pretty well. Um, and then, uh, my last item is, um, most of you may know, um, that the, the council approved, um, for, for Barbara and Steve's, um, planning commission terms to be, uh, or to be reappointed. Uh, but they did appoint someone else, um, for the third seat and so tonight is, is Kurt's last meeting. And so I wanted to just say a few words, cause Kurt's been here since I've been here, um, going on five years. And I just re- really appreciate everything that you've brought to the planning commission and to, to council because he's, you know, constantly showing up at all of our meetings and it's great to see people, um, that are involved in their community, um, that care of our community. And so we wanted to, um, he's also has ten years in, so we wanted to give him a certificate of appreciation for that. So that you have something for us and so just wanted to give you that, just thanking you for your ten years of service with the city and...
Thank you very much.
And I brought some cookies in case everybody wants some cookies.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
Speech, speech.
I just always, also wanted to thank Kurt, uh, for your ten years on the planning commission. It's really been an honor and a privilege to work with you and appreciate the experience and the insight and comments that you've had for the projects. You read staff reports thoroughly and you bring intelligent comments and I very much appreciate all you've done for us.
Thank you.
I would echo the same, the due diligence that you do, um, not even just for the planning commission, but our items that are at city council, it is appreciated, you know? I mean, asking those questions brings up important items a lot of times and, you know, we all try to review things, but sometimes things get missed, so questions are a great way to keep us on our toes. So, um, it is well appreciated and, um, hope that you continue to come to our meetings.
I hope to.
With, with five people, five people on the planning commission and five of them in the city council, we all come from a different place and we have a different view, a different slant. And I always appreciate your view or your slant because it's, it's often not what I came up with.
You know, it's, it's what I really appreciate about being on this commission. There's five different minds, five different points of view, along with the staff experience. And, uh, it's, it's been a pleasure and I've learned a lot just being here. I, I gotta go back to my working days in code enforcement and we would, we would do now and then, uh, some, uh, planning department code enforcement because nobody else was out there with sealant trailers being used for permits, storage and what have you. And I always thought, what do you need a planning department for? You know, you could get a computer program. You're gonna build something in Main Street? Throw in what you want to do and it'll spit it out, because I was naive. And I had no idea all the work that, that goes into these things. And it's, like I say, it's been a pleasure learning, uh, how these go and, uh, I'm never gonna forget it. I, I plan on continuing to stay, going to councils and, and what have you, and you never know. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so staff communications. I just, Tammy, you've probably got all the info on Park Feet?
Um, August sixth and seventh, uh, is going to be Park Feet this year. And we are also doing National Night Out on August third. So, um, that week of Park Feet, there's other events during the week. So that Tuesday, August third, will be the senior Mr. and Ms. Escalon luncheon. Wednesday night is Ms. Escalon. Thursday night is Little Mr. and Ms., um, Escalon. And then Friday night begins Park Feet. Um, the police department's doing their cornhole tournament again. Um, so we'll have some normalcy back. Um, and I think that's it. I think they have some new bands lined up for this year. Um, so trying to get some, some new stuff in there. And I would imagine a lot of places have held off on, and we've heard this, a lot of places have held off on doing their events because of the unknown. And so, um, you know, bands or, um, uh, I think the beer trailer was another issue, like concerns if there were gonna be too many events, like they weren't gonna be able to, they weren't gonna be able to get some of the services. So I think it'll be a little bit different, cause the health department was a little challenging on, um, what they would allow for their health permits. So like, I don't know how many local restaurants will be down there this year. I know there's a couple of food vendors, um, in food trailers, trucks that would be there, so...
So based upon what Governor Newsom said today, is there anything, is, is anything else gonna change or?
Um, I'm not sure exactly what he said today.
I don't know. I mean, there's only so much he could lift, you know?
He opened the state today.
Yeah, well, I under, I, I knew what he has proposed and has said.
What he wanted.
The only regulations is the mega events, which is five thousand people indoors and ten thousand people outdoors, which doesn't apply to Park Feet. So, um, we should have a parade and our vendor booths and if you're vaccinated, you don't need your mask outdoors. Um, if you're not, you should have your mask on, um, and that's pretty much it.
Okay. Anything else from staff?
Nothing.
Any commissioner communications? Mark?
Uh, well, that's great news about Park Feet and that whole week. Happy to hear that. Um, I was just, I was, um, walking back from Les Schwab's this weekend and wondering along Countrywood as you're coming in across from the three new houses there. Um, there's a couple areas of sidewalk that are still asphalt. Will they be, um, you know, let's look where they came across the street and dug into utilities? I'm just wondering if that's gonna be looked at to be made concrete again?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay. Sean?
Tammy, who would, uh, local community agencies contact if they're interested in seeing about putting up a table at Park Feet?
Um, Debbie Merkin is handling, um, them. I ha- I have a, I can get you contact information.
Okay.
Is that for the scouts?
Yes, possibly, if we can get enough people. And do we have any status update on, uh, the road repairs on one-twenty?
Um, yes. So, uh, Caltrans is going to be coming through and redoing the roadway. Apparently when they did it, um, they really were trying to do, I guess, like a slurry sill on there, but there were way too many patches. And so when they did it, they put too much product in there where it didn't really cure. So the trucks are causing all of those issues. So they're trying to stay on top of doing the patches, but they are going to be coming back through and redoing the roadway completely, doing more of a reconstruct than an overlay.
Any idea of timeframe for that?
You know, Justin gave an update at a recent council meeting and I can't remember what the date was that he gave us. I wanna say maybe this summer, maybe the beginning of next year, but I really, I'm not positive on the date myself. Sorry.
Okay. Um, only other thing is, uh, Commissioner Danzinger, I wanna echo what everyone else has said. You've been a really great resource, uh, on my time on the planning commission. Learned a lot from you and I, I appreciate the friendly banter that we have had over the, uh, past few years. And despite whether or not you're on the planning commission or whether you attend the city council meetings or not, um, I can say for certain that while there are certain individuals that don't necessarily agree with you, sometimes I don't agree with you. I can truly say that, um, given your experience and your opinion and your knowledge and your research, you've made Escalon a much better place. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Very nice.
Anything else to say, Kurt?
I, I would again echo, uh, my appreciation to all of you and, uh, I've learned every bit as much from you as you think you have from me. And at, at city council meetings, too. I, I don't go there to be a citizen participant in every single meeting, cause there's a lot to hear and a lot to learn. And, uh, I find it very interesting and, and in fact, uh, I think it was yesterday morning, I listened to the entire YouTube city council meeting, you know, with my phone in my ear there, to the whole thing. And, uh, I, I just, uh, appreciate all we, we do in this city and I, and I hope the citizens appreciate it as well. So, uh, I wish you all good luck and whoever takes my place, I wish them good luck as well.
Thank you, staff, for everything, for tonight's meeting and always, and thank you, Kurt. Well, I'll be seeing ya. I know I'll be seeing ya.
I'll bike over there and...
All right. Anything else? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.